Good evening. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings will broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. The meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Eccles is absent today. Councilman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed is also absent today. We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Toles to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Most gracious and holy Father, as we approach your throne of grace, we come this afternoon thanking you for the opportunity to meet in a session that you will be able to direct our path. We pray for every city official, we pray for our mayor, we pray for the city council, and Father, we pray for the citizens of this city. We just give you all the praise and all the glory, and we just thank you that even though it's cold outside, it's still a good day. Father, we give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee work session and city council meeting held on February 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 29th through February 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. Unfinished business, item number 8A is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1901 Jefferson Street in District 5, Teresa Gilli being the last known owner. This resolution was tabled for 60 days on December 6th, I'm sorry, December 8th. What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department, I recommend be tabled for 30 days.
Second.
Okay, what is, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
For item number 8B, no council action will be required on this resolution concerning 1315 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 7. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 209 Morningview Drive in District 2, Tuscaloosa LLC and Mutual Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in November of 2011. There've been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I recommend we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 304 Morningview Drive in District 2, Charles E. Posey and Con Posey being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
I'm David Livingston, I'm an attorney in Gadsden.
Sir, if you would, step to the microphone and the podium and give us your name and your address, please.
I'm David Livingston, I'm an attorney in Gadsden at 247 South 8th Street. Mr. Posey has come to see me today to speak in opposition to the motion and request that it be tabled. He's got some photographs of the residence, it's a small house on Morningview Drive. He obtained title in 2011 through a tax sale. He's come to see me today, he's expressed that he's tried to get the property sold at one time, but was unable to sell it because when the buyer understood that he had a tax deed only, they backed away. He's come to me to try and maybe seek to quiet title of the property, and that is a process by which I can get a court order that says he in fact owns the property as opposed to anyone else. And that will take probably three to four months to get that because you have to run it in the newspaper. He has mowed the grass to the property, he has secured the property by boarding it up, and that's what's happened, why it's a nuisance at this point, is that he's had people come in and steal the wiring out of it. But he does plan to do something with this property, and if you'll give him a chance. I know it's been a while since he's actually done something, but he wants to try and get this property up to snuff and get it where he can either sell or get a renter in there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2011. There've been no improvements to the property, was a building permit taken out by Mr. Posey in November 2011. We notified him as the owner, and according to the title opinion we recently received, he is the sole owner of the property. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
I move to abate the nuisance.
Do we have a motion to abate the nuisance, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 708 North 8th Street in District 3, the State of Alabama, and Mildred Keller and heirs of Herbert Keller being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in November of 2014. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, I've had several complaints on this residence.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 523 Valley Street in District 3, Debbie R. Crook being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Miss Crook, if you would, give us your name and address, please.
Well, I'm Debbie R. Crook, and that is my house up there. They have towed it up and vandalized, and I want to get it tore down, but it's going to take me a little time because I've been in and out of the hospital. That's all I got to say.
How much time, how much time do you need?
I don't know, how much time can y'all give me? Because I'm serious, because I'm still going in and out.
We could, ma'am, we could, you could let the city dock it down and you can make payments to the city over a three-year period.
Well, how much do they charge?
Depends on how much the material weighs. You can get with Brian Harbison right there after the meeting, and he can talk to you about it, okay?
All right, yeah.
He usually makes those payments around a hundred a month, isn't that true, Brian? To make it easy and affordable on everyone.
All right, yeah. All right, thank you.
All right.
And you're still on the property, okay? Because we don't want...
And that's a good point, that's the benefit of paying for the demolition, you get to maintain title without a lien against it. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in November 2014. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 405 North 33rd Street in District 6, Jody Michelle Chester being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Now again, if you would, step to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Myra Pinkston, this is Jody Chester, I'm her grandmother, and she asked me to speak for her. The house at 405 North 33rd was my father's, and when he passed, he left it to me, and we gave the house to my daughter, and she never done anything with it, so my granddaughter wanted it, so we gave it to her. And she has started some work on it, we've put a roof on it and done some painting, and something has come up on the deed. We got Mr. Livingston to do just a warranty deed for her, and I had called his office to make an appointment to try to find out from a Mr. Jeff Logan, done a title on it, and we've run into some problems, so we would like time to try to straighten out the title because Jody wants to fix the house and live in it.
How many dollars are you planning on spending on this piece of property?
Well...
I've looked at it, and matter of fact, we have a bunch of calls on this property, it's in my district. I have calls all the time, I own it, people have come by and looked at it. It's been three years since anyone's did anything. They kept a record of it, and the last time anybody did anything was 201 or 13.
No, we've done some painting on it back in the summer of 15.
So you just did a little painting in the summer?
Yeah, and that's when she took possession of it, was in 15, 2015. And we have all kinds of tools, ladder, paint, all kinds of stuff in the living room. We have some new windows and some doors in the house to put in, but, you know, she wants it legally hers, we want to get the title straightened out where, because she plans to live there. It was my father's, her great-granddad's home. For sentimental reasons, we want to keep it.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case on February 1st, 2013. What little improvements have been made is just some painting to the exterior. There was a building permit taken out in February of 2013, another permit taken out in May of 2015. Other than that, no improvements. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3310 Stonewall Avenue in District 6, the State of Alabama, and Barbara Jean Dolehite, also known as Barbara J. Gabbard, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2011. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 703 AgroCola Drive in District 7, the State of Alabama and the estate of Wilson Todd Bryan being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in May of 2015. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution granting annulment of street right-of-way for a portion of Virgin Street. Betty Jean Hood Washburn, the adjacent property owner, has requested the annul. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Sir, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jim Copeland, I'm an attorney in Gadsden, Copeland Law Firm, at 816 Chestnut Street, and I represent Ms. Betty Jean Hood Washburn. Ms. Washburn is the owner of property at 110 Virgin Street, more particularly described as Lot 1, Block Number 28, Bellevue Highlands First Edition. I would pass around a copy of a survey, and the reason that Ms. Washburn needs to have this portion of the street annulled is that the house located that she owns on the property encroaches into the right-of-way of the road. This survey was done by Larry Walker, so they'd like to take a look at that. Ms. Washburn requests that that portion of the street be annulled as she has plans to possibly put the house on the market and doesn't want to have a problem with the encroachment, and hope to get that cleared at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Mr. Copeland, we're not looking at this, and you gave us, we've already seen it.
Okay.
So if you're wondering why we're not looking at it, we've already seen it once.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this resolution? What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one request from the legal department, and this is where I ask for unanimous consent on the issuing of a special event alcoholic beverage license, and this is for United Way of Edgewark County that sponsors the Girlfriend Gala, which will be held on March 24th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say that this is an event that's held every year, and basically, the purpose of this is to, it goes into a Dolly Parton foundation, but it buys books for young people from zero till they go to school, so all parents have to, I think some are even gotten from the hospital, but this is a good function and it's a good thing.
If you have, if you have young people in your house, or if you have grandchildren, this is, as Councilwoman Toles mentioned, this is a very good program.
They continue to get them, that time as well, yeah, it is, good reading.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I now have one from the engineering department, request for unanimous consent, so resolutional warrant, be it number 3304 for City Landscape and the Copeland Stripes Incorporated, in the amount of $33,100.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
It's just for landscaping of the Billy Martin Wildlife, and also over here, what was the other one, right over here, from the riverfront? For landscaping.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I ask for unanimous consent, please, for resolution recommending approval of special use permit for AT&amp;T. It's on our towers up on 1212 Bellevue.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is just to modify the equipment, AT&amp;T's equipment, to the existing telecommunication facilities at 1212 Bellevue.
Any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two, I'd like to bring them together. One's ordinance, ask for unanimous consent, also one's ordinance meaning a year 2016 budget to allow for the grant funds in the amount of $20,000 pertaining to the Gadsden City softball concession stand, and the other one's accepting the grant of an amount of $20,000 from Coosa Valley RC&amp;D Council for the City of Gadsden's girls softball field concession stand.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance and the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the vote was unanimous for consideration.
Make a motion with adopt, please.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, this is in District 6, it's down there where the old M-Sats, um, baseball field used to be, right across the street from General Forest Old School, and we have a lot of girls that play down there, and this is just a win for everybody. We're getting $20,000 for this, I hope that'll be enough to do what we need to do, but girls softball's on the rise. If everybody looks around and see all the colleges now playing girls softball, it's really a big thing now.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance and the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Is there any more new business?
I'd like to say good evening.
Good evening.
Come on behalf of the Gadsden Public Library, the month of February is designated as Black History Month, and in accordance with that, the Gadsden Public Library annually puts on a series of events on Tuesdays during the month of February, and we wanted to put in, thank you all for letting us put in a plug, on tonight even as we speak, program, there are two participants in the program, Shari Bostic and Anthony Treadwell will be bringing some information concerning the Southern Hills Cemetery. They've done a great job of cleaning up the cemetery, there's also some significance as far as genealogy and family history. Also, tonight, we have Mr. Samuel Pugh, who is a historian from the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute. He always brings a good presentation using media and his extensive knowledge of black history. And then, February 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., we will have a discussion, the essential role of black fraternities and sororities in African-American history, be a program, hopefully we can get represented from each other, Divine Nine, that is the moniker for the black sororities and fraternities, excuse me. We're proud, obviously, our council president is a member of Kappa Alpha Psi, and we need to get somebody if we can, Mr. President, to speak on that particular fraternity. One of the highlights each year for our black history programs is the annual soul food contest, February 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., will take place in the Arthur Green Room of Convention Hall. A lot of, a variety of foods, desserts, for a minimal fee, you can come and gorge yourself. And probably the highlight of our, this year's events, on February 27th, at 10:00 a.m. to noon, we will have attorney Bruce Boynton, who is a very prominent civil rights soldier. And I'd just like to take a quick moment to read just a brief part of the article. Mr. Boynton was the son of Sam and Amelia Boynton, and they were longtime civil rights advocates. In 1958, Bruce Boynton, a black law school student at Howard University in Washington, DC, bought a ticket on the Trailways Bus for a holiday trip back to his native Selma. And when he stopped in Virginia, he wanted to get a hamburger and a cup of tea, but was forbidden to do so, and was fined $10. forbidden to do so, and was fined $10. He didn't set out to be a trailblazer or a civil rights foot soldier, but he wouldn't let the matter rest, and so he appealed his case to the next judicial level. To make a long story short, the case developed is Boynton versus Virginia. The federal court case was settled with a ruling in 1960 that racial segregation in public transportation is illegal under the Interstate Commerce Act. This, the lawyer for this particular legal case was none other than Thurgood Marshall, who obviously would one day become the first black associate justice of the nation's highest court. So Mr. Boynton, 78 years old and not in the best of health, is going to honor us by coming and speaking, and sharing some of the experiences, and then to finish that, his mother and father actually set the course for him. His mother, Amelia Boynton, during the Bloody Sunday, was beaten and gassed on the Edmund Pettis Bridge as she and other demonstrators attempted to march to Montgomery to push for equal voting rights. And his daughter is the chief executive of the Gaston Mall, Carver Boynton. So we're excited about him coming. It's a great coup for the City of Gaston to have a person of that stature to come, and we want to invite everyone to come out each night, each Tuesday of this month, or the remaining Tuesdays of this month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, and I really appreciate that. And please make note of those events. I do want to thank, during the course of Black History Month, I do want to thank all of the, our Gaston Library, of course, you've heard their slate of events. Our school system does a wonderful job of exposing our young people to black history programs and events, so there's a full slate for the schools as well, for those of you who are available during the day to attend those events. And then, of course, our churches, a number of our churches on Sundays are having programs as well. So again, we do appreciate all of the activity and all the events during the month of February, and we get an extra day this year. This is a leap year, so we get an extra day. There are 29 days this year. All right, now we're down to remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to say, Tim Madden played basketball for me a long time ago. I better need to be careful here with Derrick, he played too, but a lot later. Tim always had straight A's, smartest basketball player I believe I've ever had. I never saw Derrick's report card, I think he kept it hid from me, but he was right in there with him, I'm pretty sure, too. But, Tim, a good fellow, and same as you, Mr. President.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Councilwoman Toz?
I'd just like to say, we had the opportunity to hear from the new baseball coach here, and he had a lot of great things to say about what he's trying to do here in the City of Gaston, especially in the East Gaston area. I think Litchfield has never had a baseball team, and so now he has formed that, and we're going to try to do a lot. And I just encourage parents to support him and also to support their children, but I think that's something that's good, is good for the city. There's going to be a little league baseball team, so we're not as bad as some people say that we are.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Toz. Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Mr. President. You know, you hear us talk about education a lot up here on the council, and the other day at Gaston City High School, we had the president from Alabama A&amp;M University here, and they gave out over $300,000 worth of scholarships to 17 people from Gaston City and two from Edgewall. So this time, it was all girls, so guys, they're going to have to get on the ball so they can get some of that money.
I told you women rule the world, and you wouldn't believe me.
Last year, they came and presented scholarships also, and next year, they'll be doing it again. But I'm going to have to say congratulations to our president here, because his daughter was one of the recipients and got a full ride scholarship. So that's, you know, parents, if you're doing your job, and you're there with your kids, and you're pushing them and pushing them, you know, you can get a free education and you don't have to pay for it, and that'll help a lot. Then I have two announcements, and I asked to make these announcements. And, you know, everybody always talking about we don't have anything to do here in the City of Gaston, but on Valentine's Day at the Convention Hall, they will be having, celebrity impersonators will be there, starting at 7:00. So get out and support this young man, he's from, he's a local from Gaston, Bobby Miller, Bobby Miller, I'm sorry, and to help them out. And then also at our church at Abundant Life, on Saturday night, this coming Saturday, we're having Ladies in Red, so you have something to do this weekend. You don't have anything to do, just come on out and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Worthy. If you've never seen Bobby Miller, he is phenomenal. He is a very good, very good impersonator, and he'll be bringing a number of world-renowned impersonators with him as well, so that's going to be a good event. Councilman Billings?
Nothing.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I'd like to echo what Councilman Toz, Council Lady Toz said. We did meet with the new baseball coach today, and he is going to make baseball affordable again for kids to play. I know it's been outrageous the years before, he's going to make it real affordable. It's kind of interesting, I was looking on the internet today or yesterday, and I seen some teams are already asking for little football teams, midget football teams, and I seen the prices of what they was going to charge to the cheerleaders and people to play. I'm just hoping that we'll get our football team coaches going in the same direction we got the baseball teams going now, because you train those kids up the right way, they'll always know the right way to play and stuff like that. I'm just hoping that we do, that does catch on for them. That's all we got.
Okay. I was just made aware of a separate event, I think, that's going to be held on, at the East Gaston Community Center on February 20th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's the Black History Review, and I think this event is being sponsored by a number of young people in the city as a part of some of the citywide black history activities. So please support this where you can, and again, it's Saturday, February 20th, at 4:00 p.m., and again, this is the Black History Review. Black History Review. A couple of other items, the Boys and Girls Club are actually having a black history program as well, and that program is scheduled for February 22nd, I believe, it is, next Wednesday, February 22nd, I'm sorry, two Wednesdays from now, February 22nd, at 5:30, 5:30 p.m. And I'll be the keynote speaker at that event, so I'm excited about being able to address that group. Just a quick note about our nuisance properties, and I hate that a couple of the folks have left, but honestly, folks, we take no pride in having to tear down property in the city, and it's, you know, many of us consider whether or not we can reasonably avoid abating a nuisance before voting on any of these resolutions. So when you hit difficult times, whether you live in the home or not, when you hit difficult times and you need additional time and you have a plan for actually bringing the house up to code, feel free to reach out to us, feel free to reach out to the building department. I think we've demonstrated that we will work with people who are in earnest trying to bring the house up to code. But again, normally, those resolutions are driven by a number of complaints and just a very obvious nuisance issue that get us to that point. So it's not something that we take lightly, for sure. The last thing I wanted to speak to before I entertain a motion to adjourn is here, over the next few weeks, and for the entirety of 2016, I'll be asking the community development department to convene each month, at least once per month, to address one initiative designed to support the interest of the poorest among us. So we're already in February, and I feel like that we've already addressed one issue in 2015. We voted on and passed a moratorium on like business licenses for payday lending businesses, and the intent there was to give us an opportunity to study and review the impact that those types of businesses have on our community. On the surface, they don't add much value, and so, but they do create extremely negative situations for the poorest among us. And so, again, what I'll be asking the community development committee to do is address those issues, at least one issue per month, to try to drive out some of the issues that negatively impact the poorest among us. One thing that was brought to my attention, and this is not the first time, but I got a phone call on last night, and the phone call was a young lady who's bedridden at this point, very sick, and has, at some point in the recent future, in the recent past, purchased a vehicle from a buy-here-pay-here lot. And basically, her situation involves her attempting to and having record of having made payments to this buy-here-pay-here lot, but them basically not giving her credit for her payments, and then taking it upon themselves to repo her vehicle without actually notifying the city that she's conducting a repo exercise, and then took her vehicle, and took her vehicle, and then within a day, had it back on the lot with a price tag on it, reselling it. Now, obviously, there's a lot, this was just last night, there's a lot of fact-finding that needs to be done to validate much of her claim and much of the story, but on its surface, it's just horrible. It's rare that I get phone calls from constituents and from citizens where they're just bawling and crying because they feel like they've been taken advantage of. So that touched me so that I reached out to the DA's office today, and they pledged that they would evaluate and try to provide support where appropriate. But it's concerning. There are a number of predatory businesses out there. There are a number of businesses out there who are taking advantage of the poorest among us, and we have an obligation, I think, as a city to make sure that we make it difficult for them to do business, and that we preserve the consumer rights of those folks who are being taken advantage of. So again, I don't want to overstep our bounds or do anything that we can't do, but where we can, we're going to try to address initiatives that touch the lives of those folks and try to improve their experience and prevent these businesses from taking advantage of them.
I'd just like to echo what you said, Derrick, a while ago about the houses, the condemned houses. You know, if you've had a house and it's been there for years, and we go by, we also go by and look at the houses, we go by what the recommendation from the building department is. Mr. Harbison's up on all of his houses, he knows, been to all these schools, he knows about the house, he knows how the structure is, he can go by and look at one and tell what it needs, if it's going to spend more money into a house than it's going to be worth. He's knowledgeable about that, he's been here 20-plus years, and I just want to say that, you know, we go a lot of times about what his recommendation is.
All right, thank you, Councilman Cannon. If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.